Is, do you have a preference in terms of Q and A? When those questions come in or answers?
Yeah, so typically, what we do Barbara typically is we will run through the presentation. You can do questions throughout if you want. And then afterwards, we encourage people to either raise their hands for Q and A live or to put them written. And then typically I would go through them and direct them to you because they're going to pretty much all be for you. I mean, we could have some City of Morgan Hill specific stuff, but I can do that or you can let me know if you prefer to sort of just go through them yourself.
No, you can help out, okay?
Got it.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Hi, Mike.
Hi Barbara.
Sorry, go ahead. I apologize. Go ahead.
So, and then Michael will introduce you at the beginning. I'll kick it off and then I'll turn it over to Michael.
Okay, super. All right. And what else?
Are we good to start the webinar?
Yeah, Barbara, are you good if we let people in?
Absolutely, we're good.
All right, and then I'll wait a couple of minutes to get everybody in and then I'll say hello.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to wait a couple more minutes before we get started. And we'll wait one more minute and then we will get rolling. All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our City of Morgan Hill Town Hall this evening, April 22nd. Thank you for joining us over the last several months for town halls. And tonight's a real special one and we've invited someone to come and talk with us about in the areas of stress and resiliency. And you know, during COVID, it's been, it's been a tough time, you know, for a lot of people and you know, one of my concerns has just been, you know, how people are doing and kind of coping with this new and different and changed way of life. I mean, I think that many of us can see sort of light at the end of the tunnel, if you will, meaning that, you know, more and more people are getting vaccinated and you know, COVID numbers are going down. But you know, we're still kind of a ways from that. And so we thought it'd be just a great idea to just kind of carve out some time during, you know, for a town hall to hear from an expert, you know, about sort of tips to help, you know, really cope and get through, get through times. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Horta. And he is City of Morgan Hill's Human Resources Director. And then he's going to introduce our speaker this evening. Michael?
Yes, thank you Christina. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Horta. I'm the HR Director. And we are very excited to have Barbara here today to help with our presentation. We partner or one of our employee benefits is having Concern EAP, which is Employee Assistance Program. And they've been phenomenal throughout the year, helping us cope through different things with COVID or just personal related things. And as Christina mentioned, we thought it'd be great to bring it over to the community. And we're super excited that Concern was able to help us out and provide this presentation. And so Barbara, without further ado, we'd love for you to start.
Thank you so much, Michael, and thank you Christina. And let's get started. We're here, we're going to carve out an hour this evening so that we can go through a presentation. We have some talking points. I get a little nervous when someone calls me an expert. I am a psychotherapist and trainer for a lot of years. So I'm going to change what Christina said just to say I have some expertise in this, okay? And I am going to assume that every one of you who is on the call has expertise in your own lives and in your own bodies. And so I'm going to be really, I'm going to stay conscious that these are talking points. And I think there's some good information here. And you are the expert in your body and in your life and in your stress level and in your interventions on yourself and good self-care, okay? So we'll start with that. And let's, let's get going. We have an agenda here. We're going to talk about resilience as Christina was saying. This has been, oh my goodness, this last year plus has taxed all of us in various ways. So we have that as a major and a chronic stressor. And we know that chronic stress hurts us. It's injurious to our health, our psychological health, our mental health, our emotional health, and certainly our physical health, okay? So we need to stay resilient. We need to pace ourselves. We need to, number one priority, good self-care for ourselves and our loved ones. All right, so that's top priority. We're going to look at what resilience is. And we're going to look at the characteristics, the sort of common characteristics of resilient people. And we have a little assessment. This is not a test, of course. We have a little assessment. So what I'd like you to do, if it's not too much trouble, is grab a piece of paper and a pen or a pencil, right? Hopefully that's close by because we have an assessment. It'll take just a few minutes. It's not going to take a long time. But I really want you to do this assessment for yourself to see where your, where your strong points are, where your strengths are in terms of resilience and being able to manage stress. And also with those places where you say, ooh, I could use some work here. I could, I need to focus on some of these aspects of my resilience so that I can shore up those, those places where it just needs a little more of our attention, okay? So we're going to be doing that in a little while. And then we're going to look at some of the strategies to build resilience, okay? And then I thought it might be helpful because we are talking to the community. So we have, I'm going to assume, a whole range of life stages. All of you are in different life stages, right? And so different life stages often have different stressors. And we'll talk about those, except for the babies, you know, except for the preschoolers and the toddlers. But when we start to get into adolescence and early adulthood and then midlife and then the elders, we're starting to see some very specific stressors pertaining to those particular life stages, okay? Again, nothing is set in stone, but it's sort of some, sometimes it helps to see, oh yeah, that's happening because I'm in this particular life stage, all right? And then we're going to talk about your personal action plan. If you can think about that as we're moving through our information to see where you can, what you're going to commit to, okay? So this is an inside job. Again, this is good self-care. And so we want to encourage you and support you to take good care of yourself and look at your action plan. Because we know that when people create goals, when they have goals, and the goal now is good self-care and stress reduction and high resilience, that people actually achieve those goals. So we need to have a little goal, a few goals in the future that we can move toward. And then finally, we're going to leave some time for a question and answer period. I may ask questions in the middle of this and that'll be good. You can either put it in the chat function and, or I don't know, can we unmute them? Can they unmute themselves Christina, or should we just wait?
Yeah, absolutely. So if people want to speak, what they can do is they can raise their virtual hand. And for those that are calling in and I see one, they can hit star nine and then they can ask questions or, you know, make a comment.
Okay, so if there are questions at the end or comments at the end of our presentation, we have, we have left some time for questions and answers, okay? So this is what we're going to do today. Let's talk about the need for resilience, well, as Christina was saying, oh my goodness, COVID has given us, guess what? It has given us a lesson in having to face things that are out of our control. This is a big, a big wall in front of us, okay? And so you, but we've been doing this for over a year and I'm hoping that you have implemented really good stress management and self-care practices, okay? What we have to recognize is that change is the status quo. Change is not something that is imposed on us. Change is just part of what life is. Life is about change. We see that in nature, of course. We see that in our children as they grow. We see that in us as we age, right? So it's, change is a status quo. There are some things out of our control and excuse me, that was my dog. I apologize in advance. He may continue to do that on occasion. There are some things out of our control again, as we know, this pandemic has, has shared that information with us. And chronic stress is injurious to health. Acute stress, not a problem if our lives are in danger, but when stress is ongoing, you know, the stress cycle, the physiological stress cycle is a three-minute cycle. And if it lasts longer than three minutes, it's because we have taken it and run away with it. And we create our own stress after that initial physiological rush of adrenaline and stress hormones, right? Blood pressure going up, heart rate going up, digestive system shutting off, immunity getting depressed, that's a three-minute cycle, okay? So we want to interrupt that if our lives are not in danger. We want to interrupt that stress reaction in our bodies because chronic stress hurts us. And what we have found out is even positive change increases stress level because we are creatures of habit and predictability and we want to know things that are going to happen. We don't want surprises. And so even positive change, like getting married to someone you love or having the baby or buying a home, you know, they increase our stress and they're positive. So change, even positive ones, increase our stress. So what is resilience when we're faced with change that is ongoing? Well, it's the ability to persist, right? To move forward in the direction we say is important to us. It's the ability to cope with difficult things. Life will present difficult things. We know that if we've lived long enough, we know that, that is just true. And sometimes we can even flourish when handling challenges. Why? Because it stretches us, right? It moves us out of our comfort zone, right? And we learn new things. We realize how much, what the capacity we have for good self-care and for managing change and for sort of bouncing back after you've been stretched. You know, when we stretch a rubber band, you know, that's stress, right? We're stretching that rubber band, right? Now, if we stressed, if we stretch that rubber band too far, right? And it's worn down, it's worn out by all that stretching, it's going to snap. We don't want to snap, right? But when we're stretched, we want to be able to bounce back or snap back, right? Or spring back, I'm going to use that word instead, spring back, okay? And so that's resilience. And also finally, the resilience means is that you stay on course with your goals and your, your life purpose, right? Okay, so that's what resilience is. And what are the characteristics of resilient people? Well, resilient peoples, they don't see crisis, crises as insurmountable, like something that they cannot get through, that they cannot survive, okay? So they say, yep, this is really tough, this is really hard, and it's really taking all that I have to manage it and move through it, but I'm going to do it. That's perseverance. That's the ability to stay with it, right? So they don't see it as, oh, I'm just, I'm just going to collapse, right? Resilient people adapt to change and they're flexible, right? And so I read a book many years ago called The Unbearable Lightness of Being. And that, it was a wonderful book and even the title, I always remember the title, The Unbearable Lightness of Being. What does that mean? That means that we, you know, if you, if you like basketball and you see the basketball players or even the football players, you see how they're flexible, right? They're kind of moving, I mean, that's physical, right? But if we, we think about that in terms of our attitude and our, in terms of our willingness to adapt, right? And to move, to move on our life playing field, you know, the playing field of life, we're doing that. And that is flexibility, just like we want to keep our bodies flexible. We want to keep our attitudes and our minds, right? Flexible, okay? Resilient people keep things in perspective, right? So people, resilient people realize that everyone has a perspective. If I asked every single one of you a question, you'd come up with your own opinion and your own perspective. All perspectives have validity, they're all valuable, right? They all have value. And you want to keep things in perspective and you don't want to blow them out of proportion. And when we are taking care of our stress on a daily basis, then our perspective is healthy. We don't take things and run away with them, if you know what I mean, right? We don't take things out of proportion. We keep things in perspective. Resilient people sustain good health when they're under pressure. So they don't crack, they don't crack. And what we have to do when we're under pressure, just like this year plus has done, has taught us, we have to pace ourselves. And pacing means you know your limits, you're not going to burn yourself out. Now, sometimes we have to give 110%, you know, because life or work or family or relationships ask that of us, right? And so we're going to give over 100%, right? But that has to, has to, that has to be the exception rather than the rule. Because if we're doing 110, 150% all the time, we're going to burn out. And burnout has serious consequences and it is much more difficult to recover from burnout than it is to prevent it. Now, I'm going to talk to you about very, very simple practices that are, that require us to do it on a daily basis to, to keep ourselves in good health and to not burn out. Okay, so we're going to do that. And I can assure you, they're very simple practices. You don't have to spend a lot of money, you know, buying all this equipment and all this, you know, workout, you know, gear, you know, don't have to do it. You can reduce your stress right where you sit, right? But I'll tell you, I want you to not just sit, well, you get up and move, okay? And then finally, or finally on this page, resilient people have a pretty darn good concept, self-concept. They have a pretty positive view of themselves. Now, this is not about perfection. They don't see themselves as perfect because you know why? Perfection is a chronic state of stress. If you think you have to be perfect in everything you do, that's why I don't like the word expert, right? If you have to have that standard, and I'm not talking about, I think we all need to have high standards, right? And excellence, reaching for excellence, but that is different than perfection. And we, we want to be careful that we don't hold ourselves to unrealistic expectations. We want to know what our limits are. And that is a sign of resiliency. And it's also a sign of person who is a whole person rather than this unrealistic robot, okay? So really, we want to nurture a positive view of ourselves and, you know, be very kind and gentle with our limitations. We all have flaws, you know, we all have things that we don't do particularly well, right? That's just being a human being. That's just part of the human race, all right? So please pay attention to the way you talk about yourself, all right? Okay. Oh, there are more characteristics, let's keep going. Okay, sorry, resilient people are problem solvers. So what I like to say is, there's a mentality called solution-focused mentality. So when we are faced with challenges, right? That might stress us out. We want to go to, okay, we want to, of course, honor our feelings. We want to be aware of our feelings. We're going to talk about that. But then we want to spring into action. We want to ask ourselves, okay, excuse me, we want to ask ourselves, what are the possible solutions here? And that is another sign of resilience because people are saying, there's a problem here, there's a challenge here. And I know because I have a good positive view of myself, I know I can solve it, I can find solution, I can resolve this. So they're creative in that way, all right? And they, sometimes they have to again, stretch themselves to adopt new ways to accomplish things, right? And this is where learning, you know, we want to be lifelong learners. We want to be lifelong learners because we're always, now, we want to balance that, hold on a second, we want to balance that with a good self-positive image. So we don't want to always be in the state of striving, you know, I'm not good enough, I have to keep doing this. No, that's stress, that's chronic stress. So we are balancing, hey, I am good, I am a good person and I'm taking care of business, right? And I have a lot to offer and I want to keep learning. I want to keep stretching a little bit. So we want to balance that. We don't want to go, we don't want to get lazy and say, ah, I've learned everything there is to learn in life, you know, baloney. And we don't want to go to the other extreme where I'm just not good until I'm perfect, okay? And resilient people learn from their experiences. They learn from their experiences. And you know what we call that? You may have heard this, finding the silver lining, right? Finding even things that are tough, even things that are tough. We say, okay, I didn't want this to happen. This was really hard. I wouldn't have asked for this. And what can I take away from this? What can I learn so that in the future I can use what I have learned? And sometimes we learn about ourselves or sometimes we learn about particular situations and we can transfer that into the future. So we are again accumulating all of these skills, right? And again, we're balancing that with, I'm okay, just the way I am, all right? And then resilient people have really good boundaries. They know when to say no. They know their limitations, right? So again, when we work in teams or when we're in the, in the work world or when we have families and we're juggling both, right? In the context of this pandemic, we, we can again, keep moving, keep moving until we drop. We don't want to do that. We want to know, hey, I'm at the edge here, I'm at the edge. And I remember just, just a few weeks ago, I had to say that to someone. I said, I'm at the edge, they asked me to do something, you know? And it would have taken a lot of time and energy and effort on my part, I just didn't have it, I'm so busy. And I was grieving, I lost a pet. So I was, I was maxed out and I heard myself say, I'm at the edge mentally and emotionally, I can't take anymore on. And that's a sign of knowing myself, first of all, knowing when I'm stretched to the point, I don't want to snap and knowing when I have to say no. Now, I'm a yes person, I'm a team player, I want to help out, you know? I want to be part of the team of the human race and my work colleagues, right? So we have to balance that. Yes, I want to say yes to a lot of good things because I learn a lot and I'd have to know when to say no. And then really, really importantly, we have to develop and maintain a supportive network. We need a community around us. I can tell you, I just working with parents who are working from home with children, with infants and toddlers. And I said to someone, because she said, you know, she was sort of at her wit's end, you know, she has to work and she has to take care of a four-year-old, you know, or a two-year-old, right? And I said, perhaps people are asking you or you're asking yourself to do something that's not doable, that's not doable, right? And the other thing that I asked her to consider, to think about is, did she have enough people around her, enough of community around her to support her, to support her? We can't do this alone. We can't do life alone. And people who isolate themselves and who are stoic and say, I can do it, I don't meet anybody, they are in danger or already experiencing a high level of stress, okay? So these are really important characteristics to remember. Make sure you have a really good support system around you, whether that's extended family, friendships, right? Your spiritual community, your church community, your, you know? Please make sure that you develop that and maintain it. Any questions about these, these characteristics? Anything, all right? No, all right? Because we're going to go to that assessment. And now it's your turn to think about what your strengths are and what areas you may need to do a little work on. So what I'm going to do, this is the scale. So please write those on your, real quick, you know, one through five. Let's start with five. Five is that we're going to have 16 statements that I'm going to show you and I'm going to leave on the screen so you can see them, all right? And if you agree with that statement, then you say, yeah, that's me, that's me, right? Because these are all characteristics of resilient people, those 16 sentence, statements, right? So if you say, yep, that's me, I'm really resilient in that area, then you're going to give yourself a five, right? Now, if you say, oh my gosh, I don't do that and I am a wreck in that, in that area, you're going to give yourself a one because you're saying, no, I can't agree with that statement that says this is a part of being resilient. And there's everything in the middle, right? So four is, I agree, I'm not, you know, really great at it, but you know, I do it most of the time. And neither agree or disagree. Number three is like, you know, I really can't relate to that, that really doesn't relate to my life. So I, you know, three, I'm going to give myself a three. You don't want to think too, too long about these answers, right? Because usually our very first impression is the most accurate one. And then number two is, well, I disagree with that statement. I, I sort of falter in that area, you know, I could really use some work in that area. So if you see your ones and your twos coming up next to these statements, then you know, oh, there's my, there's my, those are my places where I need a little work, okay? And the fives and the fours, yeah, you really don't have to worry about those, all right? So here we go, I'm going to leave those up. And here they are, here they are, one through 16, all right? And I'll just say the first one, I'm usually optimistic, I see difficulties as challenges and expect to overcome them, that's confidence. You're going to give yourself a five, yeah, I'm good with that. Or you're going to give yourself a one, it's like, ugh, I'm pessimistic, oh, I need some help in that. So I'm going to leave those there. I don't think I need to read them. What do you think Christina or Michael? Should I read them out or should I just leave a moment or two or a minute for people to read them themselves? What do you want?
I say you read them.
I read them, okay? So number one, I'm usually optimistic, I see difficulties as challenges and expect to overcome them, all right? Five through one, all right? And don't think too long. Number two, I find the humor in tough situations and it can laugh at myself. Yeah, humor is a great stress reliever, right? Number three, I can tolerate high levels of ambiguity and uncertainty in situations. And we know when situations are uncertain, they raise our stress, right? So are you pretty good at that? Can you tolerate not knowing what's happening or what's going to happen? Number four, I want to know how things work and I ask questions and there are no dumb questions, right? I like to try new ways of doing things, right? Do you strongly agree? Yep, I can do that. Yes, that's, yes, that's me. Number five, in a crisis, I calm myself and focus on taking useful action, all right? So you don't get stuck in difficult feelings. You don't get apathetic, you don't fall apart, all right? Okay, number six, I'm able to recover emotionally from losses and setbacks because we're going to, that's not if, when we have losses and setbacks. I'm going to, you have the confidence in recovering. And my feelings of anger, loss and discouragement, they don't last long. So you see, we're not perfect. We have these difficult feelings of anger and loss and discouragement because we're human beings, right? But we don't get stuck there, we don't get stuck there, all right? Number seven, I'm good at problem solving. I use logical thinking, common sense, I love common sense and creativity to solve problems. All right, you've got a whole toolbox to solve problems, all right? Number eight, I'm very flexible. Remember I was talking about flexibility? I can adapt quickly to new and different situations, right? I'm not going to let things get me down or beat me down, all right? Number nine, I learn valuable lessons from my experiences. Remember I talked about that silver lining? I'm going to learn something, even tough, tough, when tough things happen, I'm going to take something away that I can use for the future. Number 10, I bounce back from difficulties. Yep, yep, I'm not, they're not going to beat me, all right? Number 11, this is a big one, I have good social support. I have close friends I can talk with. I can express my feelings to others and I can ask for help. Sometimes we don't like to be vulnerable and ask for help, but asking for help is a sign of resiliency and wisdom. Number 12, I feel self-confidence. Number twelve, I feel self-confident and I have a healthy concept of who I am, alright? We have already talked about that. You decide where you are. Five is, yep, that's who I am. One is, ah, I'm always beating myself up, this, you know, this inner critic. Number thirteen, I have a strong sense of purpose and meaning in my work and in my life. So this is really important, especially as we age. Sometimes when we have families, this built-in, ready-made purpose and meaning, we have to raise our children, right? When they grow up, it's like, no, now what do I do? You know, when we retire, it's like, oh, now what do I do, alright? Um number fourteen, I focus only on those situations I can influence and accept circumstances that I can't change. This is a big one. Because worry is the, the thing, that worry is uh the idea that you can change something that is not changeable, right? You can control something that's not controllable, alright? So that, you know, you wanna focus your attention on those things that you can have, uh you have influence over, or you can make a difference in, alright? Number fifteen, I view change as a challenge as, or an opportunity rather than a problem to avoid. You know, oh, something's coming down the pike, I'm gonna avoid it. Well, usually the things that you avoid sort of catch up with you. They kinda catch up with you. It's like, oh, I thought I was uh you know, gonna avoid that. And finally, sixteen, I take good care of myself, especially during stressful times. I eat healthy, a balanced diet and I exercise regularly. And this is really important because guess what? When we're stressed out, those are the two things. Nutrition and sleep are what gets shortchanged. We stop taking good care of ourselves with good food. We eat junk, right? Or we get, we have insomnia because we're, we're taking our problems to bed with us. And then we're um, we are sleep deprived and those two things we wanna avoid at all costs, okay? So I want you to add up your score, alright? You have sixteen uh sixteen numbers there, right? From one to five. I hope this was all clear. We're gonna go to the scale. There it is, alright? So add up those numbers and you will see, you will see what your score is. This is not a test, by the way. It's just a self-assessment, alright? Alright, so there they are. Now, when you get your score, what I'm gonna do is just wait a few heartbeats. And I'm gonna go back to the, the statements. Because uh you won't be able to take these statements with you, I don't think, right? So I want you to look at these statements and see where do you need some work? Where would you like to put some effort so you can raise your score in any one of these areas, alright? So you look at those and I will, and if you have any questions about what we have done, please ask them. Just unmute yourself and ask and we will help you out, okay?
So just go ahead and raise your virtual hand if you have questions or need help. You can also do star nine if you're calling in.
Oh, okay, good, rather than the chat function.
Yeah, and Barbara, if you're comfortable, we can post this uh PowerPoint on our website where we post the videos to our town halls.
That would be great. That would be great. So people can refer back to it. Oh, I'm really happy you can do that. Thank you.
Yeah, we're recording on Facebook Live too and we'll have a link so that those that couldn't join can wa-watch afterwards.
Oh, I'm so happy that you've said that. Thank you and that it's happening. Alright, let's move forward then. Here are the strategies. This is what um I really want to impress on you. You wanna stay focused in the present moment. Our minds are made up of all the memories, all the experiences we've ever had in the past and all the, the things that we, that might happen in the future. That's what our mind is comprised of, right? It's different than our brain. So what we wanna do is, we don't wanna go into the future and catastrophize. We don't want to go, uh oh, what if this happens? Oh, this is gonna happen, right? Most of our worries don't even come true, right? And we are stressing ourselves out by thinking or looking into the future and thinking the worst. Or we look in the past and we, we kind of should on ourselves, the shoulda, coulda, wouldas and the guilt and the shame and the regret, right? That's raising our stress. It's raising our stress and the past is nothing that we can change. Now, if you wanna look into the future to plan and prepare, that's a good use of your mind. Or if you wanna look in the, the past to remember a lovely vacation or a holiday or a loving moment, that's great, right? Cuz that's going to calm you down. But in uh, other than those two reasons to go into the future or into the past, stay in the present, which is where stress is the lowest. And where you are, you have all of your power. You have, you are most empowered in the present moment, okay? So what we talked about is quiet mind, active brain. Quiet mind, active brain. Okay, we wanna shove all that clutter, the mind, how many thousands, hundreds of thousands of, of thoughts go through our minds every day, wanna push those back into the background and bring our brains forward and our presence and our attention and our focus forward, okay? So we can be as empowered as we can bring all of our skills and our talents to the present moment. Harness your attention, right? Now, this is really important because we are hardwired to look at what's not working and we are hardwired to look at what's negative or something is out of place. Why? Because um when things don't look right, our stress reaction turns on because we might think it's life-threatening. Wait a minute, something's not right in this environment. Is it life-threatening? So that is hardwiring. That's how we are. That's what human beings do. Now, what we have to do is counteract that by focusing on what's positive and what's working, right? Not to deny the tough things, tough stuff. There, there's tough stuff in the world, right? And we're, we're experiencing it. So you don't deny it. You stay in reality, but you focus your attention on what is positive, what's uh optimistic, right, and what's working. Use your body as feedback. You know, a lot of things come out of our mouths that are not true. And not that we're consciously lying. It's denial. Sometimes we're just in denial of what's really true. And sometimes we fib, you know, that's just cuz we're whatever, okay? So, but your bodies don't lie. Your bodies don't lie. So one of the ways to stay resilient and to keep our stress low is to check in with our bodies every day, right? Check in with our bodies. Where is my stress? You know, I feel my stress in my, my jaw and my upper, my upper back, my neck. Check in with your body every day. Check in. How am I feeling? How's my body feeling right now, okay? And stay current with your emotions, right? So there are really four emotions, glad, sad, mad, or scared. And there are hundreds of nuances, of course, right? Glad, sad, mad, or scared, right? So when you check in with your body, you know, how's my body today, right? Especially at the end of the day, you wanna check in uh as often as you can throughout the day. How am I feeling right now? How am I feeling right now? Cuz this is self-awareness, okay? And so when you have those answers, you can honor those feelings and say, well, how can I go take good care of that feeling right now? How can I take care of myself, alright? Now, breathing and moving are critical to stay resilient and to keep your stress low. You gotta keep your stress low. One of the uh, one of the easiest and fastest ways to bring ourselves back to calmness and, oh yes, I'm safe, I'm secure, is to breathe deeply. Now, we can't go through a breathing exercise. We don't have the time. But I really wanna encourage you to look up this name. He's a doctor, Dr. Andrew Weill, W E I L L. And he's a, he's a physician and he's a breathing guru. He will take you, uh and they're free online, right? He'll take you through some very nice breathing exercises, but breathing, deep breathing, down, you're gonna get that air in your tummy, right? Will relax you right away. And the other tool, I told you, these tools were very simple. The other tool is, is movement, moving. Now, some people don't like exercise, right? I happen to like exercise, not a problem. Some people don't even like the word, okay? But moving is not exercise. You can move, you can move, you know, stretching, right? Right? You can bring your shoulders up to your ears and then drop them, right? There are very simple moves that you can do to keep your body and your mind and your attitude flexible. So those are two tools, breathing practices and movement practices. And there are a lot of free guided um uh programs online that you can access. So you wanna keep developing your flexibility in all senses of that word, okay? Um finding acceptance. This is a big one because there may be, you know, I ask myself really good questions like when I'm stressed out and something's happening and I say, is this life-threatening? And thankfully, uh the answers always come up, no. Oh, wish, good. The minute I ask that question and answer it, no, this is not life-threatening. I'm already reducing my stress. Oh, alright, this is not life-threatening. So why am I getting so stressed out? Oh, okay. Big, big breath, right? There are some things that we can't control again. So where do you find acceptance? And these are some of the places. You decide cuz you know your, yourself and your life. But many people find acceptance in their spiritual beliefs. And maybe people who have more of a secular uh belief system, they have a philosophy that have, they uh rely on those truths, right? Some people go to nature and find relaxation and comfort and solace in nature. Some people go to their relationships and their families, their loved ones. You decide. Some people go to the garden, right? You decide, right? But find those places where, when you are confronted with things you cannot change and cannot control, find those places where you can um feel comforted and stand solace, alright? As I said before, know your limits. Know your limits. You don't have a super person cape on all the time, okay? Expand your options. You know, when we get stressed out, what happens? We get tunnel vision. We get tunnel vision. And we only see, uh oh, there's only one solution to this. No, there's usually more than one solution. So when we breathe and we lower our stress and we ask ourselves, what are the possible solutions here? Then they, and our creative brain starts remembering and thinking up good solutions, right? Options. We want to expand our options. Attitude is learned. You really have to, really have to uh sometimes um work on adjusting your attitude. We can all get into, you know, uh, you know, I'm irritable and I don't, eh, everything is negative, eh, right? Uh and that's, if that's temporary, fine, because you're a human being. But if that's your default and if you're always going to, eh, and pessimism and negativity, ah, it's never gonna happen, never gonna work out, ah. Yeah, life sucks. Life's terrible. You know, you're raising your stress and it's chronic, okay? So if you hear your, yourself talk, eh, yeah. Try to change it. Try to come up with another more positive response to that, you know? And you know, one of the spot responses I like is, I'm doing the best I can with what I have right now. I'm doing the best I can with what I have, right? And that's self-confidence and that's trusting yourself, okay? So focus on your attitude. Think about how you're talking about yourself and how you're talking about the world. Because our thoughts, the way we think, uh actually increase stress or not. Try to do adopt the one day at a time attitude now in twelve step. I like this idea because there are times when, uh I used to do this too, like, what am I gonna do with my life? You know, before I made some major decisions and thinking about my whole life? You know, it's like in one, one fell swoop is like, what am I doing? How about if I take one day at a time, take good care of this day, take good care of myself and my loved ones? And I look into the future to plan and prepare and that's all I'm responsible for. What's wrong with that? I think that's great because what you do today is gonna create, in part, your future. So one day at a time and finishing today with appreciation for yourself and life and other people, alright? Build, as I said, build a positive community around you. We can't do it alone. And then nourish yourself in all ways, right, right? Mentally, physically, emotionally, right? So you wanna treat yourself like a loving parent. That you have this little self inside you that's a little budding flower. And you want to, and you know, if you're a gardener or if you know that you have to tend little seedlings, right? Tenderly, right, and lovingly. And so you want to treat yourself in that way, alright? Alright, and then, oh, so these are the strategies. Are there any questions about strategies? No? We're gonna talk about life stages, okay, really quickly cuz I wanna make sure we have enough time for questions, alright? So anything you wanna add, Michael or Christina? Anybody that you wanna add? Okay.
Any strategies?
Yeah, any strategies um that I have missed that you wanna share? Something that you do perhaps? Anything that we haven't talked about?
About our city attorney, Don Larkin. You have a lot of stress, Don.
What are you gonna say? How are you gonna help us? I remember both things, but go ahead.
No, I, the, the most important thing for me, which I, it's not true right at this minute, but it's generally true as I try to make sure that I am getting enough sleep at night that I wake up refreshed because um on days like today when I haven't had enough sleep, um my, I, I, I can see my, feel my stress levels increasing. So that's, that's my big strategy is to make sure that I make enough sleep and exercise so that I feel as good as I possibly can.
Good, good. That's great. Yep, uh the other thing that I wanted to uh, where, who can see your messages recording on, so?
I think everybody can see him. We, uh Jim Sergi from the public said, um, the smoke pot will help, I hear.
For yet, even though California has, uh is legalized marijuana or pot or weed, um I wanna say something about this. You make sure your strategies are not going to hurt you, right? So there are healthy strategies and there are unhealthy strategies. You have to, if you're an adult, you get to make those decisions for yourself. My concern when I was a, I mean, a psychotherapist, I'm retired right now, but I retired last year. One of my specialties was addiction recovery. So I can assure you, if people learn um to self-soothe and take care of their stress in unhealthy ways like with alcohol and other drugs, then the risk for developing an addictive process is greater, just to let you know. I don't want to say anymore, alright? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing that. Um and uh Edith said ice cream is a strategy, yes. I like that. I'm a frozen yogurt person and so I treat myself wild. And, and, and for me, I just, I, I think um, I, I like your example of taking things into perspective. You know, is this life-threatening and, you know, kinda trying to um step away for a moment and um, you know, putting things in perspective. And sometimes you can do that, you know, by talking to other people and, you know, helping other people and, you know, um, you know, and talking with other people sometimes by hearing about what they're going through. All of a sudden, you know, what you might be going through is, you know, teeny tiny. Um and so you kind of recover through that process by taking it into perspective.
Yeah, yeah, I really like what you just said because taking it into perspective, sometimes we're so overwhelmed. We need to bounce it off other people. We need to talk to other people and that will help us. And you know what it does? It brings uh it, your problems or your challenges into relationship. And we know that when you have, when you feel that you're supportive and you have people who are gonna take, you know, uh really um are, are really uh going to support you and care for you, uh it reduces your stress a lot, okay? So anybody else? Let's move on. Alright, let's, let's talk about life stages, alright? So gonna go through this pretty quickly cuz I wanna make sure we have time for questions and answers, you know? Uh what I wanted to do was look at some of these life stages, dealing with some kind of, yes. Check in with uh one another. Great session. Good, Edith. Good for you. Alright, preschool. So what might you see if a little toddler, a little person is stressed? Because uh especially pre-verbal children, right? They can't share with us, but their behavior is going to change, right? So they may resort to baby talk again, right? Or they may experience speech difficulties, right? There may be changes in appetite and sleep, right? They may be um sort of resisting uh what you want them to do. And we want to make sure that, we want to, we want to recognize that when children are, are, we say, misbehaving or, you know, not wanting to, to uh follow direction, uh they're not, they're not being naughty, uh they're probably stressed out. It's probably connected to their difficult feelings. And what they're doing is expressing their difficult feelings like fear or sadness, you know, or anger. And what they're doing is expressing their difficult feelings like fear or sadness, you know, or anger. And they're expressing them through their behavior or they're afraid, right? And so when we recognize that, we're less apt to, you know, naughty, naughty, not being a good, you know? Uh, we're more apt to help them, right? By reassuring them, by letting them play, play out their difficult feelings, right? Art is a wonderful way to express our feelings. And that's not just for children, it's for adults as well, right? Routines are really important for little children or for all of us, right? Routines because they, they provide the stability and the security and the predictability that children need, they need that structure. Bedtime is a great time to check in with your babies, right? Read them a story, tuck them in, so they feel safe. I do that with my dog, right? I tuck him in. School-aged children, right? And so you might see, um, some aggressive behavior, right? You know, lashing out, maybe, uh, hitting their brother or sister, right? Or being whiny, you know? Or, uh, they're physical, maybe they're clinging. You know, they want to stay close to mommy or daddy, right? Or maybe they're gonna withdraw, right? They want to isolate in their rooms, right? And sometimes they want to compete for parents' attention, right? Because they need that extra, they need that extra attention. So what we try to do with school-aged children is to give them a lot of exercise so they can work out their stress, right? Provide structure and limit setting. You can do that in a loving, kind way, right? And, uh, children need limits, they need limits and they need boundaries, it makes them feel safe. So we want to continue to give that to them. Again, play is always a wonderful strategy and play is a wonderful strategy for adults as well. Uh, try to limit media, you know, and we've, we've got the television on and there are little kids in the room and they're seeing all this news. Not good, not good, okay? And so you want to educate them in age-appropriate ways, especially if they come in from school, everybody's off school right now, but, um, they come in from school and they've heard something that's really upsetting to them. You really want to sit down and educate them in age-appropriate ways to reduce their fear, okay? Especially around this pandemic and the social unrest, okay? And the violence that we have, have been subjected to, uh, in, in this country, okay? So, but let's look at adolescents, right? Now adolescents, you know, adolescents, uh, the, the stressors are, they're pulling away from their family. They're trying to find out who they are. So there are issues of identity, who am I, right? Who am I beside what my parents think I am, right? So they're learning who they are, right? And peers, uh, their friends are really important, right? And, um, and school, schoolwork can be very stressful. So those are the possible, you know, uh, possible stressors. And you might see physical symptoms, they have tummy aches, right? Their sleep and appetite could be, um, interrupted or disrupted. Apathy, they can, you know, have you heard, I used to hear this with my, uh, adolescents, I don't care. Go ahead, fine, I don't care, right? That was their phrase, I don't care. Well, you know, they really care, but they can't let on that they care. They can be agitated and they can gate, engage in, this is where it becomes a little, um, risky. They can contain, uh, uh, engage in risky behavior, right? Right? So staying out too late or driving the car or getting in a car where somebody's gonna be speeding or trying drugs and alcohol, other alcohol and other drugs, right? And they can be isolating themselves or they can have problems in school. But I can tell you, if you look at these possible symptoms in the context of stress and in the context of them trying to express their difficult feelings, like fear and sadness and sorrow and anger, uh, then we can be more, uh, compassionate with them, right? And so what they need, they need structure, they need limit setting, they need exercise. Um, they need to have someone, a safe person, to sit down and discuss with them their feelings, right? Limit their media, um, right? You don't want them to have too much media, clarify and educate. And because they are, they're really learning about the, the world right now, right? And they have a lot of desires, but they don't have the, the resources to fulfill those desires as an adolescent, right? They're not there yet. And so, uh, we want them to, uh, talk about how they feel about the world. Because adolescents can be really afraid about becoming an adult. And some adolescents say, you know what? I don't like, you know, I don't like, it doesn't look like, uh, adults are having fun, so I don't want to be an adult, I want to be a kid again, right? And so they're tossed between, I want to be an adult side because I want the freedom. Uh, but I want to be a kid again because I don't want the responsibility, right? Yeah, that's a tough one. And parents like, who are you today? Are you the adult or are you the baby? I can't figure it out. Tell me who you are, right? So you want them to stay, you don't want them to isolate, you want them to stay connected to the peers. And as parents, we want to make sure that the peers that they are hanging out with are healthy. And, uh, you know, sort of making sure that, uh, the impressions that they're getting are, are healthy, okay? So now we talk about young adulthood, so like twenty-five to thirty-five, okay? And, uh, one study showed that this age group are the most, um, anxious, they're really anxious. Why? Because they're developing a profession, you know, a career or work. Uh, they're developing relationships, maybe getting married, maybe having children, right? And so, uh, there's a lot of stress in this, this stage, right? And so then you might hear they're being really critical of themselves, they're trying to be perfect, right? They're really anxious, they're pressured, they're pressured to perform. So what we encourage young adults to do is try to accept yourself as you are, pace yourself, go slow, right? Make sure you're engaging and, uh, taking good care of yourself, right? And reassure them that things are going to unfold, they're going to work out, right? So we want to be able to support our young adults. And then midlife, as you know, midlife comes with its, uh, uh, also comes with its challenges, right? You're providing for your family, right? And your livelihood, right? And you may be caring for your children and your elderly parents, who call that the sandwich, the sandwich stage, right? You've got, you have to care from the little, for the little ones and also the elders in your, in your family. So there's a lot of stress there. So you may suffer if you're in midlife, middle age. You may suffer from insomnia, you're bringing your problems to bed with you. You might start to feel, uh, phobias, right? So you're afraid, a lot of fears, right? Your libido, your sexual drive, your desire to be intimate may, may, um, sort of disappear, right? Or, you know, it could be, that could happen, right? Because you're so stressed out, you don't want to think about being sexual or, you know, intimate, physically intimate. And you can burn out. So we encourage people in middle age, mid-age, midlife, I'm sorry, to, uh, seek some counseling. If you have counseling through your work, uh, or your community. And continue as we talked about all those strategies, most important now, right? In midlife and make sure that you have downtime, that you're not always in the, I need to produce, I need to produce, I need to make money, okay? So make sure that you have a good community, uh, if you are in midlife. And then finally, your, your elder years. Now, um, we're looking at, you know, as we age, you know, mortality and death become more of a, uh, reality, right? Uh, when we're heading up to seventies, right, seventy-five, right? And so the, um, and sometimes, especially after retirement, uh, we may lose purpose in life. It's like, what does life mean now? I don't have, raise my children, you know, I have my home, uh, maybe left money for retirement or not. Maybe we're struggling with financial, uh, issues in retirement, right? And so these things might occur as we get, uh, older. And then health issues are also a stressor, a possible stressor. So we don't want the elderly, the elders in our community to isolate themselves or to procrastinate. Uh, you know, I don't, not really interested in anything and I'm sort of worried about things. These are all signs of stress. So we want to make sure our elders stay connected, right? Stay connected. And they can do that, we can have, and encourage them to try new activities, right? And to accept what they have achieved in life, rather than, oh, the regrets, oh, why didn't I do this? To accept the way their life has unfolded. So we want to help them with those strategies, uh, if they are in our, our lives, okay? And so I, I've come to the end of our, uh, presentation. And I want to ask you to think about, and then we're gonna have some questions and answers. Um, think about the action plan that you, you think that you can commit to. So maybe two or three, or even one or two, you decide. Any actions that you will take as a result of this, uh, person who kept on blabbing the whole hour. And this, um, this, uh, uh, PowerPoint presentation that you can have access to. I'm really happy to hear that Christina and Michael and Dawn will do that for you. But I would ask you to ask yourself, so what can I do differently? What do I, thinking about that assessment? What will I put into place? Good self-care, right? And the other thing, the other step that I'd like you to take, if you are willing to, uh, share your plan with a good friend or, uh, a family member. So what they're doing, what you're saying is, you know, I'm gonna do this and I want you to check in with me. Uh, not to, you know, uh, slap my hand if I don't do it, just to, uh, sort of encourage me and support me. Okay, because we all need that, we all need that, all right? So I'm hoping this was helpful, even if, as a reminder, and maybe some good ideas. So I want to open it up. And if it's okay, I don't mind staying just a couple more minutes over because I have, I'm, I'm done after this. And so if people want to stay and ask some questions, please, uh, raise your hand and we will try to a, answer those questions. And I know Christina and Dawn and Michael and Angie are gonna help me.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I want to go to our chat. Um, I don't see any questions in the Q and A yet, but you can raise your virtual hand. Um, or you can hit star nine to do it live. Um, in the chat, I know you read this, uh, silently, Barbara, but I do want to read you this comment because I really like it. Everyone is dealing with some level of stress and we need to make time to talk to each other. Check in with one another, great session. And so I, Edith, that's such a good reminder. I mean, e- everyone's under stress right now and we all are dealing with it very different. And I think each individual person deals with it different from a day-to-day basis. Um, and that checking in with, with each other is huge, right? Like, how, how great does it feel when somebody just sends you a text just saying, hey, I'm thinking about you, I care about you, how is your day going? You know, sometimes I might be having a stressful day and I get that and I'm like, oh, man, like, I just feel like some of the weight, you know, is just sort of lifted. So check in with one another, I love that. And then, uh, Ariana has joined us and she sent, um, in, put in the chat a link to resilientfamiliesgilroy.com. Ariana, if you're on still and you want to verbally share anything about that, but it is a, a program that's set up that's free um, to help people with resiliency, would love to hear from you. And then Nick, um, Barbara.
Said, yeah.
Yeah, wonderful insights, um, Nick said. For me, resilience is more about how you recharge, not how you endure. Without establishing periods of recovery, you dramatically hold back your ability to be resilient and successful. Thanks so much for sharing proven practices, much appreciated. And then Edith echoed that recharge, yes. Barbara, anything you want to just comment as far as that whole concept of recharging and how important?
I, I really appreciate you, uh, Nick, uh, for saying that. Because we don't want to endure, endure, that word means, oh, I'm gonna, you know? But you see it, I'm trying to, I don't know if you can see me, but I'm sort of trudging along, right? And what Nick says is so right, we don't want to get to that point. We want to recharge before we get to that burnout stage, right? And so, um, what Nick is saying is you have to carve out periods of recovery. So what I like to say is work, stop, rest. Work, stop, rest. You hear it? So it's not like work till you drop, right? Or, you know, keep going till you drop, fall over the cliff, nope. Work, stop, rest. Okay, now it's time to work again, all right? And you always want to leave time for your relationships because they're so important, like Christina was saying. So thank you, Nick, and thank you, Ariana, right?
Um, Jim said, uh, she's missing health as you get older. I think right after this comment came in, um, I think you did mention the health factor when you got to that age group. And, um, you know, I think it starts, you know, in the, in the mid, um, the midsection that, you know, that you had midlife, you know? And then it continues where, um, you know, not only dealing with the health of, you know, aging parents, but then also just dealing with one's health, you know? Just a variety of sort of, um, physical or other, you know, sort of health issues, you know? And that brings its own stresses as we kind of deal through, deal with that. And then we have a comment that just, oh, go ahead, Barbara.
I just wanted to say to Jim, I'm sorry you missed it because I, uh, it's a very important, very important issue as we age. And so, um, health issues, maybe I wasn't, I didn't stress that enough in the elder years, but absolutely true, uh, Jim. So thank you for reminding, uh, us about that because it is a stressor, it's a possible stressor, absolutely.
I, I think it also goes back to, you know, your thoughts about listening to your body, right? You know, and sometimes when things feels off, when things feel off, you know, figure out the lines, that means going to the doctor.
Yeah, yeah, can I say something about that, Christina?
Yeah.
We don't want to wait till we're, uh, 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 advanced in age to start saying, oh, yeah, I better pay, pay attention to my body. We want to start that in young, well, right from the beginning. If we can teach our children to take good care of their bodies, so by that, the time, by the time they are elderly, uh, that, you know, anything can happen, of course, but we want to take good care of our bodies to try to avoid uh, those more difficult disorders and diseases and, and infirmities, right? So start, if you, uh, start today, you know? If you haven't been, for whatever reason, you haven't been paying attention to bo, to your body, start today. Don't wait till tomorrow, start tonight, okay? So go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then another comment from, um, Odd B, uh, thank you very much, I have to leave the meeting, but it was very useful.
Oh, good.
Um, yeah, so that's, that's, uh, what's in the chat right now. I don't see anything else in Q and A. Um, I guess one final call out for anybody that has a comment or wants to share anything or ask any questions of Barbara now is, uh, now is your time. All right.
All right.
I think we are all set.
Hey. Thank you. Even if it was just every, uh, uh, confirmation, uh, like, uh, maybe with Nick, like, no, I'm doing that. And I'm glad that I came because it just, uh, confirmed for me and I'm taking care of business and I'm taking good care of myself and my loved ones. Well, that's good, right? And if you had some new ideas, good too, all right? All right, so I think we have, um, done our work for, uh, tonight, what do you think?
Yep, and I, now it's time for everybody to go engage in self-care, right, Barbara?
That's right, good self-care, number one priority for yourself. Boy, it get dark in my house, look at, I don't even, I can't even see myself anymore. Um, yeah, good self-care for yourself and your loved ones, all right? People are important to you in your life, okay? Really nice working with you, Michael and Christina and Dawn, appreciate you inviting me here. Um, and I look forward to working with you in the future again, all right?
Thank you, Barbara, thank you, Morgan Hill community members that joined us. Our next, uh, meeting will be coming up soon and we have a broadband meeting next Wednesday. And then we'll also, um, have a traffic calming session coming up, so look out for those. Have a wonderful evening and take care of yourself and focus on what you can do to be more resilient. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, Michael, good night, Dawn, good night, Christina.
Thank you so much, Barbara, look forward to connecting soon.
All right, bye-bye.
You, bye-bye.